I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the minutes for the August 30th, 2018 meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes for the August 30th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have two little typos. I'm sorry, former English marriage, I get obsessed with little. Let's see, under, number one, the exonerations and so forth, the last one, the ticket number got left out, and it's right above it in the box. And then on the last page, under public hearing, Richard Deal, dial, resident spoken, it should be in favor.
Anything further? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up is approval of purchase orders for September 6th, 2018.
I'll move approval of purchase orders for September 6th, 2018, in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred six dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is approval of accounts payable for September 6th, 2018.
I'll move approval of accounts payable, September 6th, 2018, total amount, six hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and ten dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Just to note, there's two large amounts on there. It says six hundred grand, but that's for the insurance costs and medical insurance, so that's why the number is so large. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next up is approval of manual checks for September 7th, 2018.
Move approval of manual checks, September 7th, 2018, in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand two hundred and ten dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, are there any announcements?
Yeah, I have one. Some of you may have been at the JCDAs meeting last week or the week before. The President, Mr. Eric Lewis, announced that there would be a day, and it'll probably happen sometime in the October timeframe, where we're inviting all citizens to provide input in terms of where the county and where the Development Authority ought to be going. So pay attention for that. As I said, it'll be probably sometime in the October timeframe. Place to be announced and date to be announced.
Anything further?
I just, Mr. Blood has withdrawn his name for consideration for the BZA appointment, so we currently have vacancies for the BZA. We also have several vacancy for the ESA, which does not have a quorum at this time. So if anybody is interested in serving on any of the boards, they are volunteer positions, but they're vital to the operation of county governments. Those boards are how county business is accomplished, or much of the county business.
Since the last meeting, no applicants at all? Come on, guys, where are the applicants at?
There's one caveat on that. If you seek appointment on the BZA, you cannot be a member of any other board or commission in the county.
Yeah, the Ackerman.
Yeah. The Board of Zoning.
Board of Zoning Appeals. The other is the Emergency Services Agency Board.
Yeah, if you have questions, just direct them to the county administrator or commission staff, they'll be gladly to help you. Same goes for you, sir, if you just direct to the county administrator after the meeting. Is there any further announcements?
I just wanted to say that your comment about, come on, guys, if we work jobs, you know, just like you do.
I recognize that, sir.
All these things, at least Ackerman, what position are you in?
I recognize that, sir. If you have questions or concerns or anything about the board specifically, please direct them to the county administrator. All right, we'll move on to public comment, and there's a large number of public comments, again, so we'll listen to you all, just please be mindful, it's three minutes, and just please stop at three minutes, so we can get through everybody. All right, first up is Amanda Godlove. Oh, sorry, maybe I can't, there's no page numbers on these.
I have to go to the left.
Nancy Gregory. Someone play a joke. They gave it to me like.
Tell me when, Jess, does the time?
She starts when you start.
Okay. Information is now known about the deceptive political process that occurred to get Rockwell into Jefferson County. The dishonesty of the company has been demonstrated. The scientific facts about the toxicity are in, and the results are worse than awful. Plus, the company won't answer certain questions about environmental impacts regarding groundwater and sewage that are critical. The general consensus is that this heavy industry would be disastrous for the health of our citizens, animals, businesses, environment, and real estate values. It was recommended by me and others that you seek independent legal counsel, independent, who can help you get out of the mess that you had a hand in creating. Has that been done? I call on each of you to make a clear statement by the end of this meeting regarding your position on Rockwell. If there is a majority, I call on the county commission to make a resolution opposing Rockwell. There is no sense waiting for the BOE's independent health risks because Rockwell has refused to get one done, independent. Also, it isn't necessary in order to know that Rockwell's pollution would be terrible for our children in the short and long term. Our elected officials are commissioned to serve its citizens. You need to take a stand by publicly opposing Rockwell and working actively to rid us of this malignant company. If I call, I call on your resignations, if you're not, if you're not willing to take this stand. You also need to replace the JCDAs, who you appointed, because they have chosen to align themselves with the company over its citizens' health and well-being. Jefferson County officials need to do their jobs, or it is time to do some serious house cleaning. This opposition is revolutionary. We will just continue to get stronger. I am looking forward to the day when I wake up, and the Rockwell nightmare will be over, and our biggest problem will be where to find a place big enough to have a party.
All right, Susanna, is it Buckles?
Morning.
Morning.
Hello. Hi, all of you. I just want, as a resident of Jefferson County, lifelong, born here, I just wanted to put in my two cents. September of 2017, I came before this commission to seek required approval from you, to place Gapview Farm, my 330-acre cattle farm that I inherited from my father, which is located less than two miles from the Jefferson orchard and proposed Rockwell site, under the auspices of the West Virginia Farmland Protection Program. At that meeting, the commission, all of you, and I thank you for that, unanimously approved this request, for which I was surprised and grateful. And you, Mr. Anosco, were the first to wholeheartedly agree that this was a positive decision for the county. And I appreciate your very kind and heartfelt remarks regarding the legacy of my father, Frank Woodruff Buckles. And you know how I feel about him. I know that the plans for the heavy industry, I know now that the plans for the heavy industry were already discussed and in the works at this time. My question to you now is why? Why would you even support protecting farmland, knowing that the plans to bring money to Jefferson County are the opposite of protecting our air, water, and land? You have stated that this is all about facts and money, but we are dealing with lives here. Yet inciting my father's name, you are affirming integrity, which is the unspoken, yet most important element in your positions as overseers of your constituents. In the end, it is integrity that makes us human. It is not a gift, it is earned. My father did everything in his power to survive. He lived to 110 years old. I ask you to do everything in your power to right this wrong decision. You are not powerless. Do the right thing for integrity. Thank you.
Diane Glues.
Good morning, everyone.
Dawn.
Yes. I'm gonna start my own stopwatch here, maybe. I have two requests this morning. The first one is that you please vote to instruct your representative to the JCDAs to vote no on the water bond. Water is an essential resource for all of us in this room, in our community, in fact, in the region. I don't want to risk having dry wells in this county, because Rockwell is drawing up to 500,000 gallons of water per day from our local water table. I've called Jefferson Utilities three times in the last two days in attempt to learn if they conducted any hydrologic or hydrogeologic studies to determine the impact on the water table of the planned Rockwell usage, but I have not received a response. The 2012 countywide groundwater assessment states that, and I quote, "It is important to understand that hydrogeologic conditions across the county are variable. Site-specific assessments should be made to understand the compatibility of a planned use with the existing hydrogeologic conditions." That wasn't adopted as policy, but it is a study that you all commissioned. You already approved the pilot without all the facts. Don't make that same mistake again. Get a hydrologic study before anyone moves forward with the water bond. My second request is that you immediately dissolve the JCDAs board. That board is a sign of a massive failure of governance in Jefferson County. A small group of county residents, appointed non-elected, worked with state-level development officials to bring a really bad deal to Jefferson County. Rockwell gains much, the county not so much. Rockwell gets a prime mid-Atlantic location that allows it to cut its operating costs. They are here tax-free for years, they pay a tiny impact fee. My impact fee was thirteen thousand dollars for, in 2014. If they expand, they will get more incentives, and all Rockwell profits go to Copenhagen. Those profits don't remain here. All for 150 jobs, I don't think it's worth it. The people who brought us this deal need to go. As the county commission, you have the authority to remove anyone from the board at any time. Remove all the members, reappoint a few sitting members for continuity, and then appoint enough community members to fill the required openings. And it can be understood that they won't have full three-year terms if we find people who are really, really qualified. So anyway, we need to have new members who will work to fulfill the vision that is outlined in the comprehensive plan. I didn't see heavy industry in there anywhere. Thank you.
All right, Tim Ross.
Now is not the time to change the newspaper of record. Trust me, we are all reading all of the public notices. Rather than proposing to switch to the Journal, you should propose to find the best way to communicate public notices in the 21st century. But now is not the time, we have larger issues to deal with. The JCDAs is one of those issues. The JCDAs violating its charter, is not serving the best interests of this county. The commission should dissolve the JCDAs, put its authority into bayance, do whatever you can to protect us from its uncontrolled machinations. Monday night, the mayor of Bolivar refused to even entertain a motion to instruct their representative to vote against Rockwell, because she thought it might be illegal to do so. JCDAs has too much power with too few controls, it must be reined in or disbanded. If the JCDAs continues to exist, please instruct Mr. Anosco to vote against the lease revenue bonds on September 18th. I was at the August 28th meeting, and it was obvious to me that many JCDAs members do not understand the language of the MOU with J U I and Rockwell. One member didn't seem to realize that JCDAs had even signed the MOU, and Lyle Tab disagreed with the definition of groundwater, as Rockwell defines it, and was rightfully concerned about Rockwell living up to the MOU as he understood it. Rockwell is adamant that they only need 125,000 gallons of water a day, and I believe them. At that rate of use, the JCDAs will not be able to pay off the four and a half million dollar loan with West Virginia, or service the seven million dollars in bonds. If the JCDAs still exists on 18th of September, they need to check their math before even thinking of voting on the bonds, and should put all agreements with Rockwell on hold until they and Rockwell come to a mutual understanding of the language of the MOU. But if this commission will do the right thing, commit an act of courage, the JCD meeting room will be empty and silent on the 18th of September. I wish you courage. Thank you.
All right, Hank Goldstein.
I've been speaking at so many meetings, I don't know what I've said to which body by this time. So if I repeat myself, sorry, not sorry, because I'm sawing on the same log. Today I have to say that, basically, that what we're dealing with in the county right now is not business as usual. And I want to talk about the issues that are happening. Obviously, the front burner issue is that the majority of the people who live in Jefferson County do not want the Rockwell factory, and will do anything that we can to stop this from happening. So that's the first issue. The other issues that are happening, and you're starting to hear that today, second issue that I want to talk about is the way economic development is being done. Twenty years ago, when I was working in economic development and land use planning, I was going to a lot of conferences, and the consensus in those days amongst the people who were like forward-thinking and going to conferences, is that this whole bending over backwards with incentives approach to economic development was going to be a thing of the past. This is not the way it's going to be done, because it's stupid. And around that time, I moved back to Jefferson County. I had been away for six years, I came back to live here. And in March 1998, I addressed the JCDAs with some ideas about how to move economic development into the 21st century, because I had gained some expertise, and I had gained some cachet as a speaker at land use conferences in this field. And I didn't say then that the way you're doing this is stupid, because I was trying to be a little bit more diplomatic, but 20 years later, they're doing the same stupid things. That's what, at the next JCDAs meeting, I will say. Go back to the minutes from March 1998, see my name on there, maybe there'll be some recording of what I said, and you didn't listen to anything that I said, which is fine, but not fine. Okay. The third thing that I have to say is that, and you're hearing this now, too, the, beside the environmental destruction that we're talking, you've heard a lot about, beside the economic destruction that you've heard a lot about, the danger of the agriculture, the danger to the tourism industry, et cetera, et cetera, this is attacking the political infrastructure of this county, which will never be the same again. There's already hundreds of people who can quote chapter and verse.
Thank you, sir.
Section 6 dash 7, 6 dash 6 dash 7 of the West Virginia Code.
Thank you. All right, Kirsten Lee.
Three minutes, this is luxurious. In the past few weeks, you've heard hundreds of us speaking out against Rockwell, raising questions, and bringing to light health, environmental, economic, and legal facts and concerns. Many of Rockwell's claims have been debunked. A 2017 study from China challenges their fundamental claim that Rockwell is safer than asbestos. Any quick Google search of newspapers all over the world refutes their claim that they have never had any complaints from citizens or workers. They've stood in front of us and claimed there's never been a safety incident in a factory, yet Bjorn Anderson is quoted in a Welsh newspaper admitting the company had breached a Health and Safety Regulation Act after a worker was pulled through one of its factory's spinning chambers. They said they would hire local, but the trucks on Granny Smith Lane, and even the caterers for the open house were out of state. The official audio recording from the Ransom Plant and Commission meeting on July 10th, 2017, clearly depicts elected officials editing laws and strategizing how to deliberately bamboozle Jefferson County residents for the benefits of a foreign corporation. Let that sink in, better yet, go listen to it for yourselves as you do your own due diligence. How does something that requires fleecing residents jive with good governance in Jefferson County's vision? Water is a big question in coming up for a vote. We still don't know how pulling 100,000 gallons of water or more every day will affect existing residents, wells, and aquifer levels. We don't know how it will affect our karst geology and the face of our land through newer expanding sinkholes. When we asked him, Ogilvy had not even heard of the term karst geology. The JCDAs did not see the actual MOU or the pilot agreement they agreed to. That seems to be a common thread, as the county commission recording from August 3rd, 2017, reflects Stephanie Grove saying to Ryzen Weber, "You asked me not to put it, the pilot, in the packet. You called me and said, 'Don't.'" You say your hands are tied, you have resources and recourse, use them. Disband the JCDAs that possibly without due diligence, or without due process, brought you a company that defies both the envisioned Jefferson 2035 comprehensive plan and the ransom community and economic growth mission. Encourage Mr. Anosco to vote no on the water bond. Withdraw support of a pilot agreement with the company, who did not reveal the extent of the impact it would have in altering our county forever. Keep the spirit, the paper of record, because we all have subscriptions now. Listen to your constituents, who have done your due diligence, and please act before it's too late. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. Jefferson Utilities, in their initial application to the PSC on the emergence, for the emergency certificate of necessity and convenience for the water line extension, requested a waiver of public hearing. Jefferson Utilities notes that they need 500,000 gallons a day of groundwater for Rockwell. JCC Groundwater Assessment Study of 2012 notes the requirement for large-scale quantity users to notify the PSC, and recommends hydrogeologic studies be performed before a new large quantity user starts using large amounts of water, to ensure there's adequate water in the aquifer. No such, no such hydrogeologic study was performed for this project or for the water line extension. The combination of waiver and public hearing and absence of the hydrogeologic study should pause the vote on the bond until both a study and public hearing occurs. If inadequate water supply is shown in the study, and the water lines, then the water line extension should not happen. How will the Jefferson County Commission and the Development Authority work in favor of the Jefferson County residents to ensure projects that they promote allows for adequate water for all county residents, homeowners, and the rare plant and animal species that reside in the morrow wetlands of Jefferson County? Whether the proposal is a water bottler taking a million gallons per day from Lake Louise, or Rockwell using 500 gallons a day to make stone wool, it is the duty of our county leaders to protect water and the groundwater and aquifer. Again, studies and proof for adequate water supply is a must before approving projects. Please require that the Jefferson County Commission representative vote no on the bond for the water line extension at this time. Please don't let Jefferson County become another resource extraction colony of West Virginia. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Susan Pipes.
My name is Susan Pipes, and I'm a taxpaying and voting citizen of Jefferson County. And I move for the commissioners to vote no on item 7 on the agenda which states, "Make a formal request to the Journal newspaper to ask West Virginia State of Secretary to become a paper of record in Jefferson County, West Virginia." Our resources should be kept and spent in our community. Our taxes should benefit those that live in Jefferson County, including local small businesses, and not sent outside of our county, harming an established business. I move for no vote on item 7. I did send a letter to the editor. I have a petition, that's almost 200 signatures, and I'm sure you have received other emails as well. As people have stated, we are watching the legals, and we are knowingly, the Jefferson Spirit on Wednesday publishes. That means we only have to look once. If you publish in the Journal, we have no clue at what time or what date we have to go look. We do not want to be forced to buy a Berkeley County paper, because we want to keep the revenue in Jefferson County. We already have two approved paper-on-records, which are the Journal and the Chronicle, even though the Chronicle is owned by Ogden, just like the Berkeley County Record of Journal. On a personal note, I do believe, including, that the move of Rockwell, from a lot of people that have the signature on the papers, were really made to benefit. You believed that this was the best move for us, the citizens. You did not have all the information needed. You have found a lot of the information that has been put forth to you. A lot of you have made the research and understood that the people, the citizens of Jefferson County are very unhappy, and have knowingly changed your mind, because you know. A lot of people have still stayed and said, "Oh, no, it's still money, we believe that we can't change," also afraid of lawsuits. Well, it is in your power to help us stop the water and sewer permit, and when you help stop this, let the lawyer sort it out, because it is okay to change your mind. It is okay to learn that you didn't know everything, and you didn't have the information, and you want to make it right to represent the citizen of Jefferson County, because I know you have seen how unhappy we are. And that is your job, after all, to make sure that you take care of the citizens. And it is also your job to make sure you support the local small businesses and grow this community, not harm this community. Because I do want you to look around, because you have started off wanting to do the right thing, and you, if you need to pay attention, make sure you help stop Rockwell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, commission members. It has become clear that the JCDAs is culpable for the mess that you now find yourselves in. In the first case, they deceived you. Talk of clean steam stacks and emissions that are better than the air that are already here hid an ugly, toxic truth. A pilot agreement that promised the health, safety, and happiness of the citizens of Jefferson County was foisted on you to sign, more than a month before the truth about hundreds of tons of carcinogens that would be dumped next to an elementary school, was published the night before Thanksgiving. You were not alone in being stooged by the JCDAs. The Board of Education revealed last week that they were duped into signing this health, happiness, and safety pilot, with only a brief financial presentation about Rockwell. Think about it. Would the Board of Education really have signed that pilot agreement if the JCDAs had told the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I think not. Would you have signed it if you had been told the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth about Rockwell? I think not. Moreover, the JCDAs has subverted the will of the people. I'm delighted that they want to hear from us in October, but they have already asked the citizens. The one time that the JCC asked the citizens of this county what their wishes were for rural land in this county, in simple layman's terms that people could understand, this is what they said. One of the highest priorities of the envisioned Jefferson Steering Committee was the public desire to preserve rural landscapes, heritage, and lifestyle that attract citizens to this county. Development that takes place in a rural environment should be respectful of the rural culture and historic nature of the community. Does that sound like what the JCDAs brought you? Finally, appointed representatives to the JCDAs all over the county have refused to represent. represent anyone but Nick Deal and Eric Lewis. My husband knocked every door in the Corporation of Harper's Ferry, every door. I have in my hand a petition demanding that the Harper's Ferry JCDAs representative vote no on the bond. Two people said they were for Rockwell, four refused to sign anything, and 173 people said, "Tell her to vote no." She is still musing out loud as to whether or not she will vote no or abstain. She isn't representing anybody and the rest of them do the exact same thing. I call on you to place Nick Deal on paid administrative leave immediately and withdraw the appointment of Eric Lewis and the other officers of the JCDAs before the September 18th water bond vote until the will of the people of Jefferson County and all misled pilot signatories can be truly ascertained. This rogue committee has misled you and ignored the citizens long enough.
Thank you, sir.
No more deception, no more rogue representatives. Time for you guys to take them behind the shed and give them a pants-down spanking.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, members. This paper here says distrust. And this is why we distrust. I am sure that no one here involved in this deal is unethical. But unethical also means fake, fishy, flim-flam, scam, shady, slick, sneaky, dirty-dilly, dishonorable, and many more. Half-truth, well-intended, intentioned, untruth, looks suspiciously like, mental dishonesty, falsehood. This is what full disclosure means. Company to release and provide all material facts that are relevant to their ongoing business operations. Disclose, to uncover or reveal to the public, Rockwell has not done this to you or to us. Above board means outright, real, reputable, straight, true blue, ethical, sincere, fair, authentic, trusty, no lie, on the level, reliable, decent. What you see is what you get. We have big banners in town telling us about car shows and other events, and yet we had no big banner about Rockwell. What happened? If I was a marketing employee for Rockwell, I'd pack up and go onto an existing heavy industrial site and fit right in. Jefferson is not heavy industrial site and nobody wants them here. One day, a bulk and/or movie will be done. Do you want to be the villain or the hero? Remove all JCDAs members, they have gone rogue. I spoke with the surgeon yesterday and he was alarmed to see the information. He said, "We have enough problems in the area that this would be an absolute disaster." He is alarmed by this. He said, "Do no harm." Is this going to do no harm to our citizens and especially our children, for God's sake? Do you have any hearts at all? Do you understand what's going to happen? Talk to a pulmonologist. Talk to the doctors, would you please? Also, no to the water and sewer bonds. We do not want to be Chemical Valley Number Two. There is already a Chemical Valley Number One. It already exists in Charleston and we know all about the accidents and the illnesses. We do not want to go there. Also, what about if we have another earthquake? We have sinkholes already in Burr Industrial Park, I heard, right? So what if we have an earthquake? What's going to happen? Are we just going to poison everybody? I'm teaching my grandson to read the back of the newspaper first and check the West Virginia DEP online. And don't trust your Board of Education or elected officials because they will poison you. I have to teach a seven-year-old how to do this so he will be prepared.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Many today will speak on the disaster and tragedy called Rockwell. And I have to say, I'm very alarmed that our commissioners did not do their own research on this matter. I do more research when it comes to buying a car, when it comes to buying a cellphone than y'all do when it comes to putting a pollutant plant in our backyard. But my main reason here has to do with the newspaper of record and I was told in an email that we can have more than one newspaper of record. But I say, "Why? Why is that necessary?" Many, and I understand why this commission, why this commission does not want the Spirit of Jefferson to be the paper of record. They are here in our cities, in our towns, in their face. There is a Spirit of Jefferson reporter covering all major events, each and every commissioner's meeting, all our town halls, our sports, even in our communities. Today, I'm speaking to the, for the newspaper that cares about Jefferson County, the paper that writes on the small things around the county, the big things, the fair, the myriad of events happening in our corner of West Virginia. This little paper has been in existence since before the Civil War. Its pages spoke about the selling of humans when selling humans was a thing. When there is something happening in Jefferson County, Spirit of Jefferson is on it. And I can definitely understand why this is going in because they are right here, they are in your face, they are not in Martinsburg, they are not in Charleston, they are right here. They know what it is you're doing and I don't think you like it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Jim Cummins.
I have copies of a document, that's what I'm going to say for the record, and also there's two figures in there that I want to draw your attention to. Yes, my name is Jim Cummins. I live in Bakerton. I'm not, I didn't grow up in Jefferson County. My dad was in the Air Force and I lived all around. But in 77, I bought my home in Bakerton and I chose to live here. It's a nice place. My wife and I have raised our family here and we want to keep the county nice. And indeed, we want to make it even better. I'm proud to have served on the Board of the Jefferson County PSD from 2008 to 2013, serving as Chair in 2012 and 2013. I enjoyed working with county commissioners Lynn Widmire and Jane Todd in that capacity. It's good to see you again, Jane. I'm also a founding member of the Jefferson County Watersheds Coalition, worked with Dick Lattarelle. I'm a founding member of the Association of Mid-Atlantic Aquatic Biologists, an organization of over 400 scientists and was twice president of that organization. I'm also the president of the Potomac Chap, the American Fisheries Society. I tell you this to let you know that I think working with one's community is important. I tell you this to illustrate that I have experience and expertise. That said, what has happened with Rockwell is a big mistake. It's going to ruin the county. I realize that this is mostly a ransom issue due to the northern spear point of that city, but ransom is in Jefferson County, the last that I checked, and we are all neighbors. Perhaps Rockwell and ransom followed all the legal procedures. I'm not the legal expert, but the degree of discontent by the public is a sign that those procedures are woefully inadequate and didn't work. It's never too late to correct a problem. The sooner the problem has been identified, the better, as long as corrective measures are taken to fix the problem. To just proceed with the admonition, there's nothing we can do about it, it's not fixing the problem, and Rockwell is a major problem. Most of Rockwell's information and public concerns have focused upon air quality, the emissions of tons of industrial materials into our clean and mostly blue skies. A vehicle concern, however, are the impacts upon our water, especially groundwater. Almost the entire county gets their drinking water from wells. Over 85% of the county is on karst and we are very, we must be very vigilant to protect that water. If it becomes contaminated, it will be almost impossible to fix. Wind will carry air pollution away, but our groundwater can take hundreds of years to get clean. I'm a retired freshwater ecologist. I've worked on Potomac streams. I call your attention to page two. This is from the Interstate Commissioner on the Potomac. It's a map of streams in the Jefferson County, the surrounding area. You'll see that Jefferson County is almost devoid of streams, this blank area right here in the center of the picture. That's because most of our water doesn't run off the landscape, it runs into the land. Another problem with the area, the reason a lot of that happens is because of sinkholes. On page three, you will see a map of the county. This is from a 2012 study of Jefferson County's sinkholes. And notice that the area of land around the Rockwell site is the most dense area of sinkholes in the county, right there. Rockwell couldn't have selected a more vulnerable site upon which to build.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Sorry, I don't usually do this, so bear with me.
Speaking to the mic, we'll close, you'll pick up.
Sorry. Oh, my gosh. All right. My name is Brian Andrews. My husband and I moved to Harper's Ferry three years ago. We have a little girl, seven months old. I'm now a housewife and a stay-at-home mom. I also have a bachelor's degree in biochemistry and a master's degree in forensic science and DNA and serology. So I'll try to keep the chemistry lecture brief. I don't need any more glazed overlooks. To start off, I could tell you firsthand some of the effects of formaldehyde and phenol and methanol. And formaldehyde, the best comparison I can give you is if anyone's ever had a shot of Fireball, I really hope you haven't, but if you had, it's like coming out of your nose. Feels about the same way. For phenol, it's an aromatic. So if any of you guys have had an aunt who wears way too much perfume at a family reunion and tries to hug everyone, times that about 10. The downside is that's an aromatic, which means that even with the EPA guidelines where they are, it doesn't, it's much, much lower, you'll smell it. It's in perfume, it's the purpose of it. So, I lost my place. Of course I did. All right. So you've been told that this factory, and it does, it meets all the EPA guidelines of the area. And you've also been told that it will have no effect. Those two don't mean the same thing. Just because they're under the guidelines doesn't mean that you won't feel an effect in the community. You will, you have to. It's biochemistry 101. Anything you add to an environment, it has to balance it out. So some of the things you'll see over the next three years is you might say, "Hey, I don't see as many fireflies as I used to." And your neighbor, you might hear, "Anyone see a butterfly on their plant lately? It's been a while." Like, "No, but I saw a moth the other day." Like, "Oh, okay." That'll be the start. You'll have an increase of nitrates, no big deal. The pH in your rainwater will drop a little bit. It's not like we have a bunch of old stone buildings around or heavy agricultural in the area. It's, I know they call it acid rain. More like an acidic rain would be a better way to put it. It just drops the pH a little bit, which doesn't take much concern that your blood has to be between 7.4 and 7.6 to live. Any difference, then you're dead. Sorry, I'm a little morbid. My car recently passed its emissions test. I have a seventh-year-old daughter. That doesn't mean I'm going to run my car 24 hours a day and stick her behind the exhaust for eight hours of it and then back her way a foot for the rest of the 16. I'm pretty sure Social Services isn't going to buy it past the inspection test when they come to claim her. Just saying. So, sorry. I had way too much coffee this morning. On a personal note, I was a medical technologist in the molecular oncology. Shit.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Catherine Jawswich.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's another beautiful day in Jefferson County, a county which a survey of Appalachia identified as the only competitively, economically competitive county in West Virginia. And your moves as a county commission are responsible for that economic competitiveness. It is difficult to understand why you would jeopardize that economic competitiveness by bringing the heavy industry and exploitation of West Virginia resources that are responsible for the economic distress in the rest of the state to our doorstep. You have a lot of things on your plate and the public outcry has made it clear the will of the people. And we would ask you to take substantive action to represent the will of the people. You have heard us, as is obvious by the conversation about the spirit or pilot agreements for small business, but we would ask for more substantive measures to be taken. As many have called, you should disband the JCDAs. You should also do whatever you can to stop the progress of the Rockwell factory, particularly as it pertains to water, until we have a hydrogeologic study performed. I am a customer of JUI and have had numerous service problems with that company without 500,000 gallons being drawn by Rockwell. I would also ask you to pull out of the pilot agreement and to, I don't know what else. Anyway, I ask you to think outside the box and to represent the will of your constituents. Mr. Anosco, please vote no on the water bond on the 18th and disband the JCDAs. Thank you.
Good morning.
Are you done?
I almost said this so I can kind of keep track of where I'm at. Thank you all for having us and having the space for us to sit and whatnot. It's interesting to follow the previous speaker because I was bringing up a lot of points. The first one I want to start with was, you know, thanking each of you for your service. And also, one of the things that I find hardest as people is to admit a mistake or right a wrong. And I will sit in front of you, and I think Josh Compton or Mr. Compton kind of alluded to it earlier today, of a mistake that I've made. And that is, this is my first time sitting here in front of you. As a citizen of this county, I have not been involved. I have not attended your meetings. I have not gone to the JCDAs. So that's my part in this current situation with Rockwell. So I want to kind of own up to that and just say, "Hey, you know, I recognize that and I appreciate the opportunity now and hope to be involved more in the future." Our previous speaker spoke a little bit about this area and some of the uniqueness of it. And I just wanted to kind of go into that. She mentioned the Appalachian Regional Commission set out a report outlining all the counties and where people are at. The majority of the state is economically, well, 15 of those counties are economically distressed, which is an increase over last year. 15 more are at risk. 24 are in that transitional state, which is like, "Yeah, it could go either way." One is competitive, and that's this county. So I want to thank you. And I know there's been calls for the JCDAs to disband and whatnot, and I don't know if that's necessarily the solution. I think it needs a little more direction. But that's a direct result of the actions of you and some of those individuals to take this county to the next level. Our unemployment is lower than the national average, whereas the overall, the state is much higher. States probably be a lot higher if we weren't so low. In your vision statement, you talked about, "Envisioned Jefferson County in the year 2035 is a place of natural beauty and historical value. It is an active, vibrant place to live, work, and play." I'd like to continue that. I feel as a county, it is our responsibility to leverage our strengths, which are natural beauty, historic value, and the proximity to DC area. You know, one of the things, this county has done things differently than in other counties, and I would pressure us to continue to do so. I don't think heavy industry is the right solution for this county. Growth is inevitable, so let's do it smarter. I know when we look at it, we're like, 150 jobs is not worth it. I recognize that it's more than that. Maybe 75 new families come in, they buy homes. There's a lot of different pieces that go into play that maybe a sitting here, we don't look at that. However, this is not the direction I think you've heard from the citizens that they want to go in. I applaud the JCDAs for giving us an opportunity in the future to move forward and say what we would like. But in this instance, I think we need to kind of step back, see if we can walk away. And yes, there'll probably be some financial repercussions. There may be. I don't know what our insurance is, you know, for these sorts of situations. But I would ask us to step back, reevaluate, and really listen to the citizens and go in the direction that they would like. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ned Marshall.
Hello. How are you doing, sir?
Hello, how are you doing, sir? As I understand it, we cannot ask you all questions at this meeting, is that true? Yes, okay. We, as citizens who elected you, deserve to know how each of you stand on this Rockwell issue, for it or against it, which one we would like to know. Will there be an opportunity for us to have a back-and-forth discussion with you all about this on the record? I ask you to plan such a time. I also encourage each of you to publicly state your views on this issue. If you're opposed to Rockwell, please come out of the closet and help us to stop this.
All right, Bruce, is it Applegate?
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity of speaking today. My name is Bruce Appelgren. I have lived in Charlestown for 37 years. I have not had any reason to interact with the commission in all those years until now. Like many of my fellow citizens, I urge you to direct your Jefferson County Development Authority representative to vote no on the water bond issue regarding the proposed Rockwell plant. It appears to me that the JCDA sought to achieve its version of commercial success by fast-talking its way to quick actions on this proposed plant that did not get the scrutiny it deserved. All you really need to know is very simple. Approximately 18 pounds of particulate matter fell in Jefferson County in a recent year, according to a local environmental lawyer. Rockwell's expected discharges would run over 300 tons per year. The 10,000-plus members of Concerned Citizens Against Rockwell saw immediately that this was an insane proposal. Had known more, you would have made the same decision. You can fix it by denying the services this industrial project requires. I have read recently that a recommendation by the commission against the project would stop it. If that is the case, please do so. Please dissolve the Jefferson County Development Authority for betraying the people, the history, the culture, and the environment of Jefferson County.
Thank you, sir.[755.12][755.12][applause] All right, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your names. Is it Nicola Bastra or Bostri?
Close to very good.
Okay, no, at least I got one out of like 30 so far, so.
Very good. Good day. You have all seen me before. I come from Millville, West Virginia. I moved there in 2011, and I decided to sign a contract on my schoolhouse when I realized the unbelievably beautiful spirit of my neighbors. And that includes that you won't see them here, because this spirit does not go for controversy. And yet, all of the ones I talked to in Millville, and we have an organization, as we're not incorporated, called Spring in Millville, they have relatives in the development, some of them, because low income, I guess one of the next steps was the development close to where the plant is planned, and they are very sad, and that's one reason why I'm here. We also live close to a quarry, as I've told you before, and so today, noise, pollution is one of the issues that I haven't heard yet being addressed. There is now the ordinance that any truck backing up has to have a warning signal going beep, beep. You know how far that carries? If all these trucks at that plant go beep, beep, beep at night, that community has to do what I do. I have the radio running all night long, because the bad news is easier to handle than the alarming beep, beep, beep of those trucks. None of the speakers, none of the people from the plant have yet addressed noise level, except at the Charlestown meeting, where I think by mistake, one of the representatives of Rockwell pointed me in that direction, because I hadn't thought about it. And there is no, there was no statement at the Charlestown City Council meeting where the rock is coming from. Do we have to really believe that a company of that size hasn't made an inquiry where that rock is coming from, and it is not local rock, because it is a special rock? It has to either come from Ohio, or from Washington State, or from New York State somewhere. For them to lie to us and say they don't know is total nonsense. And the other thing is, they didn't commit to where the coal is coming from. Now, those are two ingredients that they have to figure, what comes out the smokestack along with all the steam, because they can't tell you where the water is going to go if you ask them. Thank you very much.
Okay, is it Andy or Gilbertson or? Sorry, ma'am.
Okay, it's Artis. Yeah, Gilbertson. Good morning.
I'm a nurse at Jefferson County Health Department and at Jefferson County Community Ministries, but I'm here today as a wife and a mother and a grandmother. My family and I all live and breathe and work here in Jefferson County, and I'm also involved in local history presentations and realizing how unique and precious the history of our county is. We're all in this together, and you're not alone. Rockwell proposed emissions, which have been well documented and covered, will spew particulate matter into the air and onto the earth and the waters in our historic and beautiful county. And its proximity to our children, our schools, our elderly, and those suffering from breathing disabilities is alarming. We define our own standards. We don't go by the EPA allowable. Our clean water, our clean land and air are our most basic treasures here, and we meet all those basic needs with those elements. We're getting no guarantees from Rockwell that the health of our community will not be affected negatively. And even if it's just for two to three years, why they solve a problem when it occurs, and we know problems will occur. We know better when we get false promises. We stand in opposition to this attempt to push on an unwanted corporate interest into our life and our well-being. We're not for sale, and we do not need to build water facility to run water to their factory. We need water to drink. West Virginia seems to be a magnet for many things, it seems, like Mississippi. Predatory corporate conflicts of interest seem to be par for the course these days, but that does not make it right or fair. We say no. I've been to North Jefferson and Fox Glen, they're poor and distressed, not a surprise. Why pick Mississippi and West Virginia, I wonder? At the least, an eyesore out of place in our beautiful county. But Rockwell says it wants to be a good neighbor. We're good neighbors who want other truly good neighbors. We don't want noise and smell and pollution and the potential health risks of eyesores, costs, water required. I know you want to be our good neighbor, Rockwell, and I can't blame you there. Perhaps before you invested and excluded other potential neighbors, you would have done your homework better.
Thank you, ma'am. Lynn Wagner. Got that one right.[1176.08][1176.08][laughter]
Good morning. First, I'd like to say you can pronounce my name any way you want, as long as you vote no on Rockwell.[1190.08][1190.08][laughter] And my apologies in advance if this sounds like I'm reading at a memorial service for a mass casualty, but I feel like that's kind of what we're going to be up against if Rockwell is realized based on the impact on our community. So I'd like to read you from a list of the 100 largest employers in the state of West Virginia. These are companies that are headquartered in West Virginia. Just to give you a sense of like where Rockwell falls on that list and what we're giving up, what we're trading off, all of this that has been presented to you for 150 jobs, all the millions that we're investing in this company. So, start with WVU Medicine, 7,000, that's the number of employees. MedExpress, 4,794. S-Mark, 3,740. The Special Metals Group of Companies, 3,188. Ogle Bay Resort, 3,000. Thomas Memorial Hospital, 3,000. Princeton Community Hospital, 3,000. Cabell Huntington Hospital, 2,581. Marshall University, 2,500. Wheeling Hospital, 2,500. American Public Education, 2,255. West Banko, 1,928. United Bank Shares, 1,701. Mount near Casino Racetrack and Resort, 1,700. OVMC and EORH, 1,600. Sterling Hospitality, 1,300. Weirton Medical Center, 1,208. Thomas Health, 1,200. Vassilio and Grogan, 1,200. International Industries, 1,104. BRMC Radiation, the oncology department, 1,040. Woodcraft, 1,000. Eastern Associated Coal Corp., 980. Wheeling Island Gaming, 946. Raleigh General Hospital, 930. Homer Loughlin China, 887. Marty Gra Casino and Resort, 850. Mon Health, 840. Superior Fibers, 774. Little General, 756. Fairmont Regional Med Center, 752. Reynolds Memorial Hospital, 750. Williams Services, 725.
Thank you, ma'am.
The list goes on. Rockwell will be in the bottom three.
All right, Robert Bruno or Burns?
Barrett.
Sounds like you, sir. No one else is standing up, so.[1393.11][1393.11][laughter] Again, it's all, forgive me, guys.
I'm not gonna take, I'm not gonna take three minutes, I'll just take a minute. Very courteous of you to let everybody speak. I think you're gonna have to get a bigger room. I just asked you to put a hold or stay on any decision, either that or, actually, I'd ask you to vote no on the water bond, or either that or put a hold or stay on it until you get a environmental report completed. The one, the one point I'll make, didn't the Board of Education just buy some property on Curry Road to make a school complex? Isn't that right downstream from where Rockwell is? I think you need to think about that. I'm here on, and I'm here today on item number eight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1438.41][1438.41][applause] Lynn Bashiara.
As I drive around our beautiful county, I have noticed many say no to Rockwell signs, but curiously, I have yet to see one say yes to Rockwell's sign. We don't want heavy industry here. Bringing Rockwell to Jefferson County just doesn't make sense on any level. It will be detrimental to our health, air, water, land, roads, tourism, outdoor recreation, businesses, agriculture, horses, racetrack industry, property values, new home builders, pets, livestock, birds, bees, wildlife, and most importantly, the health of our children attending schools in close proximity to this plant. You have all heard this many times now, but what I have not heard from you is, what is the great benefit of the residents, that the residents of our county will reap by risking so much? 100 factory jobs? We don't want heavy industry here. The bottom line is, any small possible benefit is far outweighed by the many negative consequences of bringing Rockwell here. I and 10,000 of my new friends, whom you represent, don't want heavy industry in Jefferson County fix this. And since I have a few minutes, please direct the JCDA rep to vote no on the water bond. And as far as this, the paper of record, it sounds like the citizens are speaking that they would like it to be the spirit of Jefferson, so let's listen to the residents on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.[1553.83][1553.83][applause] Karen Glennon.
Hi, good morning. I honor your time. Courage. It's a word I wear on this ring that I never take off. It was, I was inspired to have this ring made by an interview I watched with Maya Angela. She was asked, of all of the virtues, what is the most important? And she said courage, because without courage, you can't exercise any of the others. This is a mess, but it's citizenry in action, engaging with the people we voted to do our work, and it is our work, as you all are community members and you live here, too. I don't believe any signatories to the pilot agreement knew the scope of what they were enabling into our community. I believe it is the duty and obligation of elected officials to know what you sign and to do due diligence. Since you didn't have full disclosure, I believe it is your absolute responsibility to become fully informed now. To that end, I ask that you find the courage and use your power to suspend the JCDA or dissolve them, take any action to postpone any vote that would move this project forward, and research this project and the path that got us here. I think that that is your due obligated diligence to become fully informed. I want to see courage in action. We all want to see courage in action. Courage brings integrity. Find the courage, we support you. I'm not afraid of a lawsuit. I don't think you should be either. The citizens have your back. Since I have a few, a little bit of time, I'd also like to say that I attended two of the Rockwell open houses. I think what we've discovered with the science, we now know that no amount of particulate matter 2.5 is benign, none. We have very little of that here. We'll have a lot more if Rockwell comes. I'm concerned about the honesty and integrity of their work and their science. Anthony Abbott, their sustainability gentleman, said to me that this was not going to impact your air quality whatsoever, and I wrote that down. And I asked him, are you willing to stand by that? And he said yes. And then he repeated that statement to me, and he added the word negatively. He said, this is not going to negatively impact your air quality whatsoever. I find that unbelievable.
Thank you, ma'am. Bijorn Anderson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Bjorn Anderson, I'm a representative of Rockwell and a senior vice president for group operations and technology in Denmark. We would like to explain that we were invited here and we are happy to be in Jefferson County. We continue to be grateful to the local state officials who participated in the bidding process, that let us choose Jefferson County. We stand ready to answer any questions the residents may have at any given time. We want to have a transparent process, and we want to respond to the concerns of the citizens of Jefferson County. As you know, Jefferson County competed with 50 different counties in 10 different states to have us locate here, and rightfully so, as we are ready to invest more than $150 million in the community and create at least 150 local well-paid jobs. in the community and create at least one hundred and fifty local well-paid jobs. We are happy to be in Jefferson County and want to be a value contributor to the local community. As you know, we held four open houses over three days up in Saint, Saint, St. Margaret's Park, and we were very pleased with the number of visitors. We had to go and see the seven stations manned by technical experts from around the world that was an expert in their field. We had also brought in four experts from external consultancy companies to explain about the air dispersion models. We were, however, disappointed that the, that the concerned Jefferson group publicly encouraged people to boycott this event. We would like to talk to all of them because we think the facts presented would have addressed some of the concerns about what kind of neighbor we will be. However, do appreciate that roughly two dozens of the protesters came into our open house after the homecoming event to ask questions. Based on encouragement from the Jefferson School Board, we have reached out to, amongst others, Mr. Kinan and Regina Hendricks, to engage in constructive dialogue, as that is what the school board requested of us. Unfortunately, they have declined to meet us. That's their choice, but I would like to say once again, we are ready to meet and discuss what needs to be discussed. You've heard a lot of claims today, and I think it would be fair to say that many of these claims has been said before. First of all, we are not going to use five hundred thousand gallons of water in the plant. The maximum usage that will be drawn on the pipe from Rockwell is one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons, as one of the gentlemen rightfully said. The rest of the capacity of the pipe is to service other users. You've also heard that we are going to do, I think, genocides, more or less. We have operated forty-five plants around the world. We have existed for more than eighty years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Marco Boy, or is that correct?
Thank you for giving the possibility to speak here today. I'm Marco Boy. I'm a director of the area of process and technology in Rockwell headquarters in Denmark. I've been working in Rockwell the last twenty years in several countries, most of the time spent in factories, in the technical area. I've been visiting all Rockwell facilities around the world. I've seen our factories near two cities. And when I say near, I mean, in some cases, inside the cities, where our neighbors are just on the opposite side of the street. Near schools, near agricultural activities, win yards, and many other kinds of activities, all of it in a good cooperation with local community and without any risk to health. We have got air permit passing through a robust process that have proven that we are well below the standards. The standards are the national ambient air quality standards and the maximum achievable control technology standards. In both cases, those standards are based on the specific health needs and requirement of sensitive populations that include the children, the elderly, and asthmatics. They also consider protecting against a decreased visibility as well as damage to animals, crops, vegetation, and buildings. And what's more is that the standards must be met under worst-case conditions, meaning including operating twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week, three hundred sixty-five days per year. And producing the product that push the maximum volume through the production process in the shortest time. And modeling the maximum concentration where they are highest at any given geographical point taken into consideration weather conditions. Even in that worst-case scenario, we are well below the standard. And on top of that, we have committed to monitor the air quality with monitoring stations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Don Smith?
Hi, I'm Don Smith, executive director of the West Virginia Press Association. The Press Association represents both the Spirit of Jefferson and the Journal Newspaper of Martinsburg. Both are award-winning newspapers, and we're very proud of their coverage here in Jefferson County and other places. However, I wanted to address the agenda item number seven, seeking change in the paper of record, and the Press Association opposes that and advises you not to seek that. In fact, state code states the requirements for that, and we support that. One of the key elements is that the newspaper in the impacted area with significant circulation. So they want to make sure that the legals are posted where people will see them where they live. There's a reason behind that. Unfortunately, West Virginia has had in the past some, some, a history of some issues. The key things are to ensure that, that a legal can't be published in an area to hide it from the people in the impacted area, that you are required to place that legal. The second, the second reason is to ensure that politicians or government officials can't use legals as a way to punish critics or to reward supporters by moving legals to their publications. The third thing is, it also ensures that a newspaper isn't kowtowing to a politician trying to gain the legals by running the support. It also provides benefits to the people and protection to you. One of the, this issue is coming up today, and a lot of people are here. One of the protections you have is that those legals were ran in the correct paper of record in the community that was impacted. I can only imagine the tone you would hear had that legal ran in out-of-the-county paper or, say, in the state capital in Charleston, where these folks would not have had the opportunity to see it. And I, I think it is important to note that on the day that the legal ran in the Spirit of Jefferson, the Spirit of Jefferson also had a front-page article going on to page two with photos outlining some of this work. So they are doing tremendous work to try and cover this for the people in the area. That's not to say that the Journal's not. The Journal also has had numerous articles, but the Spirit is the only paper dedicated in, to Jefferson County. I'm sorry, my mic seems to be breaking up. Also, in some sense, it makes no sense to have this, this, this action. The Spirit puts out forty-five hundred papers each week on Wednesday in this county, all dedicated, and this example is twenty pages of Jefferson County news. The Journal, while it has larger turtle circulation, it only puts out twenty-nine hundred in this county.
Thank you, sir. I have one more person on my agenda. We'll go through that and then take a break, and then we'll go. As far as the papers are concerned, I have one more person. Next up is Rob Snyder.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Rob Snyder, the editor, publisher, van driver for the Spirit of Jefferson here in Jefferson County. And I very much appreciate this conversation here this morning. I'm so happy to see so many people turn out. And, and what, what is happening here is what we do, except we do it more formally, right, in, in print, and it lasts. And before the advent of electronic recording devices, you relied on the Spirit of Jefferson in order to have that printed and record of, of the goings-on in the county. I don't want to repeat too much about what Don Smith said. I'm so grateful for him coming here today to, to speak to you all. I, I would just simply like to say that the, the issue of the paper of record in Jefferson County is not a subjective issue. It's not something, in my understanding, that's left to the discretion of, of local political leaders. It's something that is kind of baked into state code, and, and so it's not so much that you would want to try to do something like this. You really, in my understanding, can't. And, but if you would like to send legal notices to the Journal in Martinsburg, I applaud you for doing that. I think any way that any information can be provided to the community is a good thing. But you can't not send it to the Spirit. We're the, we're the paper of record in Jefferson County. I do know that there's been an ongoing conversation in social media and throughout, and we've kind of sparred a little bit sometimes, because my role at the Spirit is not just the van driver. Sometimes I also get to be the editorialist, the editorial cartoonist, columnist. And, and so I do know that the background of some of this is somewhat political, and that there had been an effort earlier this year with the executive committee by the Republican Party to, to seek to have the Spirit removed as the paper of record in Jefferson County. And I, very sorry to hear that. I can say that I, we're, we're committed to all points of view in Jefferson County as a, as the newspaper of record. We want to hear from everybody, and we make every effort to represent every point of view in Jefferson, even as we try to articulate and develop our own point of view. And the last thing I'd like to say to you is, the way to help to shape a newspaper's commentary is to participate in that commentary and not to withdraw from it or seek to silence it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to take a short recess until the top of the hour, so we'll come back at eleven, and if there are subsequent public comments that are not written down on the papers I have, we'll go to them, and then we'll get back on normal schedule. So we'll be back here at eleven o'clock.